Madam Plurk, please cover up.
Harry Adams?
Here.
Ken Cory. Debbie Gearhart?
Here.
Freddie Goebbels?
Here.
Stephen McGuire? E.D. Henry?
Here.
Roy Roberts?
Here.
Don Gillis?
Here.
Having a quorum, we'll have them put on the agenda to the invocation. Ready?
He's late, you know. That was great.
Father, thank you once again for the opportunity to be here this evening and to conduct the business of our little family. We would hope that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge and the courage, the moral courage, to make the right decisions for most people. We ask this in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
If anyone please stand and make the flag, we will say in the clear of the.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, that'll go for our visitors. Ladies, who's going to be your speaker? We've got one question for you though. We didn't say pledge allegiance last time you was here, did we?
No.
We finally got our flag.
I thought you were so in such a hurry to get rid of it.
No. No, I'm just pulling out. We finally got our flag, but last year at this time, we did not do it. So we have to start doing it.
We do better our way, always. I'm here on behalf of the Prestonsbury Women's Club to thank you for your past support of our biggest project that we, our small club, undertakes, and that is Christmas in the Park. This year it is scheduled for December the 8th, which is a Thursday evening. This is such a big project. Without others to assist us, it simply could not happen. We are very much indebted to Archer Park. Their staff is wonderful to help us, and last year they helped us also financially. We have students at Prestonsbury Community College that help with wrapping like 500 gifts each year, and they also get so involved in the project that they will give presents also. We would like for you, I know how busy your schedules are, to come over this year if you could just spend a few minutes with us and see the excitement of the kids. They're over there, some are there by 4:30 lining up to get in at 6 o'clock. And now, since only a certain number are allowed in at a time, they have to stand out in what may be the cold or the rain waiting until someone leaves. And so it's very important. These students are ones that may have, a lot of them have slipped through the cracks. They are not able to have parents that either have jobs or maybe working two jobs, and to try to have some Christmas for them. And so this party may be the most of a celebration that they will have. We have those volunteers that do face painting. We have games of different kinds. Santa is there. And last year he has lapped forty-three hundred and sixty-five children. And the ladies served refreshments to about seven hundred people because they bring sometimes other brothers or sisters that are older or are brought in arms. And the parents too, makes them feel like they are a part of this celebration. So we ask for your continued financial support, but we also ask you to come and observe. And I think that if you talk to Santa Claus, he will verify what I have said, but we do appreciate all that you do for us. Thank you.
Yeah, I was there last year. It's a pretty awesome event. Everybody on this council should be there.
December 8th, what time? 6 o'clock?
Starts at 6.
Have you all, have you all come up with the kids' names?
It's open to the public.
Open to the public?
Yes, and it's usually going to be families who don't qualify for like the social work. You know, something you have like the social workers or the names from schools that are giving to the various courses to families. These are ones that are like the working corps, you might think of it that way. So as you know, with all the closings of the plants and the coal mines and all that, we expect maybe another 200 on top of what happened last year. So we're really in dire straits. We're, right now, we're looking at monetary deficit of about, I'm thinking, just to bring us up to last year, about $2,700. It's kind of what we were hoping that, you know, that the council will be able to help us, you know, with at least part of that deficit. And because right now, we're going to have to do our shopping between now and November in order so we can get ready. So we, you know, it's like a domino kind of thing. You know, we need to get the gifts and then we get organized, you know, wrapping and organize. It's a big event.
Yeah, it's very big. When Santa arrives over there, the lines is unbelievable. It's unbelievable.
And you have little children out there that are barefoot and not enough clothes on, standing out in the suite it's been, you know, for a long time.
I know we did donate more than we could last year. What else did we do last year?
Two feet.
I think it was a little more than that one.
We get to speak to the park, didn't we?
Yeah.
We get a joint.
I don't think total about a lot more than that, yeah.
I think this park gave 200, I think it, the park gave us, I think, 250, and the council gave us 200, I think.
We'll look at it till we can do, we'll discuss it. Try to get to as quick as we can.
Okay.
As much as we can.
I appreciate that.
I can't promise anything, but we'll do everything we can.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you all. Do we have any other visitors that would like to speak? Liz? That busy, please?
A bit dark, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, now we need to look at the minutes for September 19th and see if we get approval.
I'll make a motion with approval.
I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Well, I'll put motion in the second. I need a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All right. The minutes have been approved. Approve the bills.
Somebody, go make your motion.
I went through them very thoroughly today. They caught a couple of my attention. Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Well, that's an unfinished business, but before we go into that, there's something I want to talk about, and one is the Judy Wannafest. Jennifer, of course, is on the committee, and I think James is, and anybody else sitting here on it. Well, let me just tell you, it was outstanding. We had Lloyd Morgan on Saturday night, and I wasn't able to be there, but I think Harry was there.
I don't know if we had Sunday or if we had best.
It was one of those.
Boy, it was one of those. They started it out good. It was a good crowd. I mean, it was, I guess, I don't know, he couldn't even wear that.
Somebody estimated about 3,000 people, which is outstanding.
Yeah, I can see that. Yeah, that was good.
Yeah, what I thought I'd talk about is the Indian paddle out we had in the open field next door. It was very successful, in my opinion. And then there was some issues with the carnival, and we're looking at different avenues next year as opposed to a carnival, maybe a different carnival. And there was some issues about a game and the prices given during the game. I already talked with the, in a debriefing, for lack of a better term, meeting with the festival committee, we've decided that we will no longer allow games that give animals as a gift or as a prize. There is no law against what they were doing unless you determine the age of a rabbit, and I don't have the skill to do that. And when we addressed the rabbits, they were in good condition and were in good order. So nothing we do at the time, but we can, looking forward, we can set it up so that that's going to be a rule through the committee. The committee decided it's not worth it, and it's not, not right, so that's what it's going to be. So also, the parade, I thought was outstanding.
More compliments again without the sirens and all the noise.
Yes.
People talking about how nice it is, standing tall.
They love it.
But I've got, like my wife said, we're going to have to patrol it a little bit because they're against the tires of the trucks. We're going to have to go back on the sidewalk or we'll get somebody hurt.
And really, the worst place for that is probably from about the intersection right here to the other side of the court.
Well, it could be, and you don't realize it, but you get one in front of the other, one in front of the other, and the next thing you know, the kid's been over. He tumbles in under a vehicle, and it's an accident, so.
As you know, I was walking the whole time, and I tell them, back up, back up. So we're going to have to find somebody that does that. And one, as police officers, firemen, whoever walking is not going to do it because soon as he goes by, they'll call him back.
Well, I don't know what the answer to that is, but I'm scared to death. I mean.
They'll run it off or something.
We used to have it up.
We're going to figure something out.
That's why we used to have it up.
The answer is better arms on the candy drawers.
We can work on that.
People that just dropping it off, you know.
And I threw that in.
And I know you've got to be careful about these people because you might.
I threw that in.
Well, I did too, and I found out a few people left.
It's such a nice event, we sure hate to.
We don't want to cloud it up.
Yeah, we don't want to cloud it up, and if we know it's a problem, let's fix it.
Okay. Also, before we go forward in business, I would like to tell you about the paddle fest coming up this coming Saturday. Due to nights being cooler and the water being a little cooler, we're going to move it at 10 o'clock. We're going to be taking off to 10 o'clock. The dinner lunch will be served at Combs Airport when everybody starts getting there. And you can put out or take out at Combs Airport, or you can go on either way for that same fee as usual. We'll be showing you back and forth. So for those that don't want to go 16.4 miles, you can go 8.2 miles. So that's going to be a little bit different twist to it. You 8.2, all the way?
Yeah, 8.2 all the way. I pulled out the cones last time when you were over there.
Easy to do, but. So we're hoping to have a big one. It's our last one of the year with fast forward to everybody. Tell them to come out, enjoy it. As far as that, before we go into business, custom, anything y'all want to say or do before we go into business?
I thought some bits, somebody was working on the streetlights on the bridge out here.
There is, they've been off for a while sometime. There is a electrical grid sit problem right there, that whole grid of lights. They've been out for a while, but they are trying to fix them. It's over above anything that we can do. Anybody else have anything to get into this?
Any information or word from our utility companies about getting the poles changed out, or anything we'll talk about that?
We've had that discussion. One of these recently put new poles in, and there is one group, and I want to say it might be TV, we're telephoning them, and they're still on the old poles, and we've tried to hurry that along without trying to be aggressive yet, but that is something we might take up soon because it looks. You got two poles, you know.
We're moving around and wait, so if you have somewhere to give them some encouragement to.
We, I'll try to make the calls coming, and then we'll look at the Kingsley Wax, and maybe we'll take it out speedily. Anything else? All right, it's an unfinished business. Second reading of ordinance number 07216.
An ordinance of the city of Prestonsbury, Kentucky by which the city annexes into the city corporate limits certain real property located on Hayes Lane and Watergate Road.
We have a poll on that? Yeah, we have a poll. I need a motion to, I'll make a motion. I got a motion from the way, I got a second from Mr. Don. I need a poll, please.
Harry Adams?
Yes.
Debbie Gearhart?
Yes.
Freddie Goebbels?
Yes.
E.D. Henry?
Yes.
Cory Roberts?
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
I would like to add while we're talking about annexation, if anybody voluntarily wants to come into the city, if they're contiguous to any of the properties that we have in the city right now, if anyone wants to come up, we can explain to them what the process is, and we'd be more than happy to try to work with them. Second reading of ordinance number 08-2016.
An ordinance of the city of Prestonsbury, Kentucky by which the city annexes into the city corporate limits certain real property located on Watergate Road.
That's, I don't know where that is. That's the church where Guyan Machine used to be. That's going to be.
Oh, okay, yeah.
It's going to be the new church.
Is that Guyan?
Yeah.
Yes, Guyan.
Sure, that name is church.
Bridgepoint.
Bridgepoint, thank you. Thank you. Bridgepoint Church.
My big motion.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. I need a poll, please.
Harry Adams?
Yes.
Debbie Gearhart?
Yes.
Freddie Goebbels?
Yes.
E.D. Henry?
Yes.
Roy Roberts?
Yes.
Don.
Yes, sorry.
Second reading of ordinance number 09-2016.
An ordinance of the city of Prestonsbury, Kentucky relating to a tax levy on real and tangible personal property and franchises offered for the general operating expense purposes of the city of Prestonsbury, Kentucky.
Before we discuss it, I need a motion and a second. Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
I got a second discussion. I want to say something about that. We've looked into it, and as far as the income it will generate, we feel as though the economy right now in our immediate area in the city is in dire straits, and we think that, and this is me speaking, I think that it will be a, just another cumbersome burden for our citizens of Prestonsbury. The benefit to us would not be that substantial, and we'll tell you right now that we don't have to have it. And that's what I've got to say about it as far as, we need to try to help people while we can if the economy's not improving. I just feel, I feel strongly about this, and we'll discuss it in any further throughout our life.
This is the one that we have every year, it's like 1% or something.
Yeah, this is the one, and.
Is that what you said, Chairman, about something next year it'd be going up more because of.
When you calculate it, it gives you a suggested rate, and it wasn't, the rate suggested, like you're talking, didn't generate enough. It's basically the same.
I think, I think this year actually went down from what the rate was last year.
No, it's exactly the same.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, instead of going up, because actually this one, like the fourth year, the rates been the same. But we had more new construction, some reassessments, so that brought the property values up so that we weren't losing money by keeping that same line.
Move to up? Yeah, we got a, ready to move it to up.
Just so I'm clear.
Yes.
We're going to keep our tax rate the same.
Same, yes, sir. We're not raising, not decreasing anything. We're just going to keep the same. That's something that's worth it, but honestly.
Well, I agree. Make sure we don't, make sure we don't move it.
Yeah.
But does this, does this order state?
We need to amend the order.
No, it's the same rate.
I would need it on the roll.
So this, this is the same rate as on the orders?
Yeah, I would need to, we need to prove this one. We need to, we need to prove this one that we have now, that we're not raising.
Yeah.
Okay. Need to roll the call vote.
Harry Adams?
Yes.
Debbie Gearhart?
Yes.
Freddie Goebbels?
Yes.
E.D. Henry?
Yes.
Roy Roberts?
Yes.
Don Gillis?
Yes.
All right, do we have any other unfinished business? None being heard. New business, Stonecrest Industrial Road update. Denise, you're up.
Yes, sir. Wanted to give you also just an update on where we stand with the project. Construction activities are actually complete at this point. We have not received the final pay estimate from the contractor to date, but we expect to receive that fairly soon. In the process of doing the guardrails that are there on the access roadway, it was determined that a different type of end treatment of the guardrails could reduce the project cost by about $8,200. So that was done, but we need a formal acceptance of that change order by you this evening, so a pay estimate is received.
Need a little bit more clarification on what we do.
Sure. Okay, let me give that to you. Here's a summary. On the back of this page, which is a summary of what the change entailed.
So I want to make it clear it is an $8,250 decrease.
That's, that is correct. The change was from a, what's called a type 4A end treatment on guardrails, which were $2,000 each. The change to a 7A type of guardrail end treatment and also a deduction of some of the linear feet of guardrail as a result. You see the summary, or the financial summary of that. Didn't change the project, just a different type of material was used.
What does that do to our, it was designed one way, we bought it, now we've changed it. What does it do to liability? Is this a crash factor in the guardrail? What have we done?
Great question. Actually, the recommendation or the idea for this change in scope came from Mark Westfall at the Division Highway, Department of Highways in Pineville. He suggested because this is a lower traffic roadway and lower speed roadway, that this deduction could be made without any problem.
Well, it started out being a blunt with a crash barrier in it, and now we've gone to just a turned down guardrail, what have they done here?
I cannot explain the difference between the two. I apologize.
Really?
I'm not sure, I mean, it's, I don't know, without looking at the.
The twice is a guardrail, I don't.
Not before with the flare into the ground with the pad, but it's been so long since I've ever.
That's what's up, really, goes into the ground.
Yeah.
But we recommend, I mean, Mark, Mark is sharp. I mean, I would trust his judgment. I remember without benefit, doesn't, I give him every benefit of the doubt.
I'm sure it needs current standards.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think Mark will come out of his way to, if it saves money, and he's right, it is low volume. I mean, it's not a high speed. Typically, 4A is the best I remember, and it's been a long time, or typically more on high speed type stuff, so it may be. I would trust KYT, so, and her.
If there were any problems with it, we could reduce the speed limit and just probably take care of the difference in the standards. And that's probably what he's done.
We are missing on the designated speed limit of our country's rail.
It's at over 20 miles an hour, it's too fast.
Well, as of right now, it's 55 because it's not marked, so. But anything that's not marked, so drive them out. If it's not designated, there's certain.
City streets, I thought they were the same, all the city streets.
I don't think so.
Well, usually, all city streets are marked as what, 30 and 31.
It's not posted, we need to get it posted.
Well, as a matter of fact, on the bottom of the hill, they do have posted 25 mile an hour. It is posted, I stand corrected. It was just posted recently, 25 mile an hour.
I'm just curious what was going on. I just, not my cup of tea, and I didn't know exactly what was going on, if it. Curiosity more than liability too is the big thing in United States. I'd ask.
I thought she was complaining to save $8,200 for Harry. I'm just kidding, Harry, I'm just kidding.
If, when you hear the change.
Yeah, there's something going on.
Usually when it says change order, you start thinking, uh-oh, but in this case, it was for our favor, so.
And see, walk mile for Harry.
Regular.
You regular.
Okay.
Yeah, we need some signs.
Well, it is currently posted 25 mile an hour.
Should we put that up there?
There is one.
Up there.
There's one, there's one road that's one up there, Scott's full of hills, 25 mile an hour. We can, we can reiterate up on top of the hill. There is a sign 25 mile an hour. I just forgot about it. But I guess you need a vote on it?
I do.
And, I need a motion?
So.
Got a motion, need a second?
Second.
Got a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Board of zoning adjustment appointments. What this is for is a property is zoned, and this, for instance, is a certain size house, or a certain size building, allowing that. The board of zoning adjustment can adjust the size of the building, which with the size of the building, there's more parking and all this. And I sent a text out to you guys. We have to have two of our zoning board, one being Frank Fitzpatrick, the other being Derek Akers, both of them volunteered to sit on this one. The second was Rick Keane, who's currently on our golf course board. I have checked, he can be on both of them. And the other is David Satchman, and that's a quorum for right now to be able to meet. I'd like to wait until after the election to see how things fall out, because I have other people I'd like to put on.
Do you have those on there right now?
I need those on there.
I'm here, question?
We do have a letter waiting to be addressed by them. I got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Planning zoning appointment, that was the one that I.
Chuck.
Yeah. We actually discussed this once before, but we didn't. We got an empty spot on there right now, and I want to move Chuck Greer from the Ethics Board to the Zoning Board. The reason being, there's more Democrats than our Republicans, and I ask to be equally unbiased on the Ethics Board, and Chuck has a lot of experience in building, construction, and wheel stuff. I'd like to put him in the empty spot on the planning zone.
Make a motion.
Got a motion, need a second? All in favor? All opposed?
I need you to make all these motions, so.
Are you done? Get your questions?
I'm done, I got my.
All right, next is approval of the broadband proposal. We only had one this time. It's from CTC, which is Columbia Telecommunications something. This is the lady that did the presentation for us. On two different occasions, she's been in here and done some limited. She is the one that last, when Solarity came in here, did it, talking about CTC, had like 12 or 13 projects that they hadn't done, and then none of them, you had a copy of it?
That was deep, deep talking.
Yeah, it's huge. Well, right here on.
Because I sent out what Denise had on.
Yeah, let's just go through this real quick if you guys want to. We went through this, and the feasibility study is the one that we have X amount of dollars to spend. We need more quantity from her and her expertise in this particular field would be second to none. She's done work all over the United States. She is, also has no ties to the wholesale or retail end of it. And I think it'd be a more independent study from someone who's not on merit of that or other. All she wants to do is feasibility study. Need a motion?
It's a cost.
Yeah, we already have a grant that, we already have a grant that taxes it, that's why we have X amount of dollars to spend. They do this going in. How much was it? $78,000. And this is what she wants to do, the feasibility study's got to work for that.
I'll have one.
Okay. That'd be the best way to summarize it, wouldn't it?
It would, yeah.
Motion. You got a motion, need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? CTC has one lead. We need to approve opening two checking accounts. It's for specific monies that have been granted to the police department and to the fire department. The fire department received a grant of $18,000 to buy turnout gear. The way this money is set up, I think it is through USDA. It's through.
Through Kentucky Homeland Security.
Okay, through Kentucky Homeland Security.
Police is through USDA. The police one is through.
Okay, the police one's USDA. And they require us to have a separate account specifically for these monies, so we can.
Watch and protect.
Move the money through it, close it out, get it out. So I need a, and the second one is for the. Move the money through it, close it out, get it out. So, uh, I need a, and the second one is for the K nine unit that we approved, looking for a grant on it. Uh, this is on a year ago, and we originally turned down. This is for a SUV for the K nine unit, uh, if y'all have seen, neighbors, like, he's pretty big, and the backseat's getting a little tight for it. Uh, they paid twenty-eight thousand dollars... For a new, and very specific, it's a new SUV, well, of course, we'll have to beat it out, I think. I need a, a resolution, I guess, from you guys, to so that we can, uh, beat it out through the proper procurement channels and, uh, purchase the SUV.
Thank you separately.
And it will be a separate checking account for it. We need that checking account opened up, and then, uh, well, we need the resolution to beat it out too, though. We need a resolution to beat it out, so I need two separate things. First, I need those two checking accounts approved. Got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The second thing, and we're gonna add this in there, uh, is, I need for y'all to give me permission to, a resolution to start procurement process to fulfill this grant on the SUV.
Thank you, Mr.?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. Next is update on the David Trail. Uh, interesting story behind that. A grant came available at the end of September. We got our appraisal two weeks prior to that. We didn't have an opportunity to negotiate the appraisal, so we went and put that information we had into the grant. And we asked for enough money to, uh, buy the properties and to, uh, only develop at this time about three miles, which would take us just past the, uh, Civil War battlefield. Um, at that point, we can at least get people out into that area. Uh, it needs to be noted here that a lot of this, uh, railway out through there that was developed with, uh, asphalt and a vehicle for travel on it. It can also be used as an emergency corridor when the water gets up. A lot of people get trapped, and they fall off in that area. This is gonna allow emergency, emergency equipment, emergency personnel to get in there to these people without having to go on boat, without having to hike, uh, up the railway. So, not only is this a recreational issue or not, it's also an emergency. Yes, it does. That particular word, it does. We use it a lot.
Are there any bridges that'll be involved, uh, that may cause problems with emergency vehicles?
Well, as, as of right now, yes, there is, but the way it's actually sectioned out, there's access points that you can get in there, even when the water's up, that'll take you between the bridges.
Three miles up toward, toward the bridge via, via cross.
Well, there will be any three miles up.
That's what I'm thinking.
That's just a property, but when they go in there and take the, uh, railway out, it takes a rail, actual rail, and they take the cross ties out, we're gonna have to do some work on it. We have to, uh, it's just really growing in places, and we're gonna have to work and get the balance like that. So, a vehicle still will be able to travel on it, it just won't be asphalt. Uh, we, we suspect it'll probably take about three phases to get it up, up to the David School area.
Is this gonna be a dense grade trail, or what's this gonna be?
No, we will, eventually, our goal is to have it all asphalt.
They say it is gonna take all the gravel off it, right?
No, 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 no.
Oh, I thought you said they...
No, 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 all they take is the, uh, cross ties and the rail. From my understanding, the battle states, all the gravel states. And we suspect we should be able to get a ten-foot wide trailer around with any rocks. That being said, it's been sitting abandoned a long time, so we'll have to rest that there. But that's just nothing that on it, and we did get the, um, we did get the grant in, the grants for quite a bit of money. Uh, I wanna thank Smith Latta for a lot of work he did on it, uh, and getting the, Denise, yeah, Smith did a lot of, a lot of work in Nice and Brandon. We were really, uh, I think at Deadlines Four Thirty, we got even about three thirty, didn't we, Denise?
Something like that.
Yeah, so, there was a lot of work went in in a short period of time, you've just seen it, but it's pretty exciting. The fact that people will be able to at least get from up to the Civil War battlefield. Uh, a little bit of trivia. Brother Davis, you can back me up on this. There is a low, uh, a low gap right there in, uh, West Prestonburg, and when Garfield, General Garfield at the time, came into the battle, he came through that low gap, he came down and followed railroad tracks into the battlefield.
That's right.
I mean, just in historical value alone, it's pretty outstanding. You know, that's, that's history, I can't even say it. It was our friend?
Yeah.
Yeah, little they said. Little they said, said, "I prefer railroad."
You needed to have those young men ran so hard.
Yeah. Alright, so that's something been done. Any questions on that? Just go ahead. Now, under sixty-one point eight one zero, subsection one C, subsection one B, and subsection one E, one C being litigation, we discuss a current litigation, one B being some real estate and business that we need to discuss, and one E being some employee personnel issues that are going this way. I got a motion, I need a second?
Second.
I got a second? All in favor? All opposed? If you all, please excuse us. You got a motion and a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We have a couple things coming out of, um, executive session.
I wanna make the, uh, motion to give Mayor the authority to put the post office up for sale due to lack of bids.
Yeah, motion and a second?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Um, I need another motion on a contract that was discussed in executive session.
I'll make a motion to accept the contract.
And I need a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Anything else to pull the council tonight?
Oh, Christmas parade, December second.
December second.
December second.
We're not, we're, we're not made yet to make official, but that's what, that's the day.
That's the day.
That's the day, we're looking at that. That is the day.
That's the day.
And the Mac Gala.
Oh, the Mac Gala's on Thursday. I need to speak to you guys about that, see who's done, and who's not, I mean, bring it. We can do that, 'cause it's not written, so, I need that motion. Got a motion adjourned? Got a second? All in favor? All opposed?